Welcome to the City Council meeting, June 17th, 2024 at 6:00 PM. City Council Chambers, 111 East Maple. We'll have the invocation from Sergio Quintero. He's going to give the invocation in Spanish. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance after that.
Bendito Dios y Padre Eterno, señor. Venimos delante de tu presencia en este día dándote gracias, señor amado, por tu amor, señor, por tu misericordia, señor. Mira, señor, en este día, señor, oramos, señor amado, por todos los councilmen and women, lord, que están aquí reunidos, señor amado. Te pedimos, señor, que a usted les bendiga, señor, que usted les dé sabiduría, señor, para tomar las decisiones necesarias, padre. En el nombre poderoso de Jesús, señor, oramos y te damos gracias, señor. Amén, señor, y amén.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam City Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Fears?
Here.
Councilmember Perkins?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember McCandless?
Here.
Councilmember Wiley?
Here.
Councilmember Vought?
Here.
Mayor Rowland?
Here. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have citizens' request. We've got two requests this evening. Tony Summer, you have five minutes to talk about traffic calming.
All right. My name is Tony Summer, 220 West Mill Street. Traffic calming is an important issue to me. So I was happy to see it get special attention at the study session last week and even happier to see that the topic sparked a little bit of passionate discussion. Passion from leadership is an important step to getting stuff done. Before we really get into it, I think it's important to clarify a couple of terms. So this, I'm sure you guys can't see it, but it's the thoroughfare plan, sorry, of the city, which is just a map of all the roads and how they're categorized. There's highways, arterials, minor arterials, all these sort of different ones. An important one is what's categorized as streets, which are really just small residential streets, which is obviously a major focus for traffic calming. Anyway, so since we're at the end of the budget season, we've heard the city manager say many times that how the budget is a reflection of values. Policies also are a reflection of values, including our traffic calming policies. The values reflected in our traffic calming policies are very clear. They say that we highly value the ability of cars to drive at high speeds through our neighborhoods. If you want to make your neighborhood safer, you are opposing that value. So we make you go through an almost impossible process to get it done. I hope that the discussion last week is an indication that we are finally recognizing that the values reflected in our policies are mismatched with our actual values and that we are ready to take action to make our policies value safety in our neighborhoods. So I would like to make two suggestions for actual actions that we can take right now that will move us in the right direction. First, for these streets that are categorized in the plan as streets, which would be the small residential streets, they should automatically be given traffic calming when newly built or when doing overlaying and repaving them. And if a neighborhood wishes to not have the traffic calming, they can go through the process that's currently required for the calming. So we would switch it up. It would be the traffic calming that is automatic and it would require the 70% neighborhood approval, the traffic studies, all of that to remove or prevent the traffic calming in the neighborhood rather than the current system where it's the other way around. Secondly, when I've spoken to people who wanted traffic calming on their street, the most common reply was that they tried, but that their street was designated an emergency vehicle route and thus no traffic calming was allowed. One prominent example of this is an incident a couple of months ago where two people were seriously injured in Inglewood when they were struck by a car speeding down the street. Inglewood has long sought to have traffic calming to make the area more desirable, but they were denied because Winter Road is considered an emergency vehicle route. So we have this backwards situation where we made our streets less safe and caused significant harm to a couple of people in the name of safety. Obviously, these emergency vehicle routes are very important, but it's also clear that they have had a negative impact on the communities that they run through. That leads to my second suggestion, which is to have a study session presentation that goes over these routes, allowing our elected officials to direct the passion that they showed for this issue last week into direct productive action by reviewing these routes, reviewing the routes at a study session and working to see if we can make changes that make our streets safe while still allowing emergency vehicles to get to where they need to go quickly. These two actions, automatic traffic calming on residential streets and reviewing our emergency vehicle routes can be taken immediately and will have a major impact on our traffic calming issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Esri. And Mr. Esri, I think you've got a presentation. Well, you've actually got a two or three minute presentation and then you're going to give some recognition to Chief Dustman, if I'm correct. Do I have that correct?
That's fine. I'd love to bring them up at this point, if that's all right.
Absolutely. I think we can trust Chief Dustman to behave himself at the podium.
Officially, my name is Bill Esri and I live at 1710 Lake Drive in Independence. I've asked Chief Dustman, his brother Mike, and Pat Liang to join me up here because I'd like to talk about, I really wanted, almost wanted to bring his dad up and everything, but he seems seated where he is because that's where it all started. Scouting is a family tradition for the Dustmans. For Adam, his scouting career was almost inevitable. It began with his father and two uncles, who grew up in scouting on the East Coast, all of them reaching the rank of Eagle. His dad served on the full-time summer camp as a kid, blazing the path that set their family on the scouting trail for the next two generations. Adam grew up in scouting, I'm sorry, Chief Dustman. Adam grew up in scouting in the Northland as a member of Troop 357 out of Liberty, Missouri. He went to summer camp at the Petro Bartle Scout Reservation, explored the Florida Keys at Seabase, High Adventure, and he held nearly every leadership role in his troop, from patrol leader to senior patrol leader and even served as a junior assistant scout master. His mother was also involved, first through Cub Scouts and then on into scouting. Adam served on the Brown C-22 Leadership Program on staff as a youth, which is now known as the National Youth Leadership Training, before serving five summers, which is where I got to know him, at the full-time camp staff at Bartle. While on camp staff, Adam was an active participant, leading young men, counseling young scouts, and growing in responsibility, eventually being elevated to the Mikasey Responsibility of Sacum. Sacum, son of bald eagle soaring in the wind. Not many people get to say that. Adam earned his Eagle Scout Award in November of '01. His brothers are also Eagle Scouts. So we've got a strong tradition and a family affair, kind of like Independence. We're everywhere. Adam credits the Boy Scouts and the work it took to earn his Eagle rank for beginning his tenured journey into leadership. He's a proud product of the University of Central Missouri, with a Bachelor of Science degree in criminal justice. He graduated summa cum laude, having earned a cumulative GPA of a perfect 4.0. He was honored with the Charnow Award for the Most Outstanding Male in his graduating class. After graduation in 2007, he began to work in Independence by taking his position as a paraprofessional in the Independence School District. While working for the school district in '08, he pursued his lifelong dream of becoming a police officer by applying and then being hired by the Independence Police Department. After graduating from the academy, he began his career as a patrol officer. In 2014, he was promoted to the rank of sergeant and in 2015, while serving as the training coordinator, or began serving as the training coordinator for the police department. In 2016, in addition to his regular duties, he was appointed as the Family Support Officer, where he was tasked with coordinating all serious injuries and line-of-duty deaths for the police department. 2017, Adam was promoted to the rank of captain, where he commanded a shift within the Patrol Division. And on August 8th, 2022, after 14 years of continuous service, Adam was named Chief of Police of Independence, Missouri, where he proudly continues to serve today. Adam and his wife Sarah are the proud parents of two boys, Aiden and Owen. And guess what? They're both in Scouts. It's an incredible journey that Adam gets to go through with them. So Adam, it is with great pride that on behalf of the Heart of America Council, the Boy Scouts of America, I can honor you with the National Eagle Scout Association's Outstanding Eagle Scout Award for your dedicated service to the community and the leadership you provide. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, City Council.
And Chief Dustman, on behalf of the entire council, congratulations. Well done and we're very proud of you as a scout and also as you are, as our police chief. So thank you very much. That brings us to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I move to approve the reports and recommendations of the city manager.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to approve the reports and recommendations to the city manager. Does anyone want to pull anything out for separate consideration?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Item number three.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Item number five.
Excellent. We've got item number three and item number five pulled out. Anyone else, other items for separate consideration? Councilmember Wiley, any things to be pulled out? Okay. Just wanted to make sure we double-checked with you. Sometimes it's hard to hear when you're on the Zoom call system. Anyone else, other items to pull out? All right. We've got a motion in a second to complete the consent agenda, minus item number three and number five. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll, minus for the consent agenda to be approved, minus item number three and item number five.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And the consent agenda, minus item number three and item number five, is in fact approved. Councilmember McCandless, the floor is yours.
First, I will move approval of item number three.
Thank you. We've got a motion in a second. Thank you very much and please proceed.
To inquire of the city manager?
Please proceed.
Mr. City Manager, if you're just reading the agenda, it's hard to always keep track of what these items do. Could you please speak about what the, I guess, ITRS, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes. So Councilmember McCandless, a member of the council, this item, if approved, is going to continue to add infrastructure at our intersections across the city. I think we've all probably experienced stopping at a red light, looking around, seeing nobody coming and wondering how long we're going to have to wait there. This will install sensors that will allow those signalized intersections to recognize when traffic is beginning to queue up at a red light and also the cross-traffic, if that's not very heavy or, you know, none present at that time, flip those signalized lights such that the traffic that's stopped and queuing up will be able to move on and not sit there for an indefinite period of time. So smarter travel, more environmentally sensitive and better care for our roads as well.
And probably also keeps people from running the light when they're frustrated that they've sat there too long.
That would never happen. No, yes, of course. That absolutely will help with that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else, other discussion on item number three? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on item number three of the consent agenda.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number three of the consent agenda is approved. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to item number five. Councilmember Fears, you have the floor.
Move approval of item five.
Thank you very much. We've got a motion in a second.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask the city manager if he could just, bargaining units are important to us in Independence. We have several and just wondered if it'd be helpful, Mr. City Manager, if you could just kind of summarize the significant changes in this agreement.
Yeah, be happy to. So this is a three-year agreement with the IBW Maintenance and Clerical Bargaining Unit. This provides for across-the-board increases in each of the three years at a negotiated amount, some adjustments to the wage table, the steps at each of those intervals for positions that are represented within this group, some of the language that the council had previously directed staff to work on relative to overtime, which was previously agreed to by memorandum of understanding and has now been fully incorporated into the contract. So I believe those are some of the more prominent changes within there. But this was a productive negotiation with our partners in maintenance and clerical and their representation and certainly happy to have three more years of an agreement put together.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other comments, concerns, questions? Okay. Seeing none, we've got a motion in a second for item number five to be approved. Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. Item number five is approved. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to the regular agenda. First item to consider is ordinance 24-041. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-041, second reading. An ordinance adopting the annual operating and capital budgets of the City of Independence, Missouri for the fiscal year July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025, estimating the revenues for said fiscal year, appropriating sums for the purposes stated in said budget, establishing operating transfers, designating fund balance allocations, establishing the authorized table of organization and designating those who make a requisition, sorry, requisition for encumbrances against appropriations. Second reading.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
I'll just make a general comment. We spent a lot of time as council reviewing the budget. We had the department directors before us and asked lots and lots of questions. This has been a product in the making for a long time. I think it's well done and that's all I really have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else, other discussion? Please proceed.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Likewise, thank you so much for the time, the staff, the energy and Melissa putting all that time in and working and cranking out the hours and the staff. And I'm sure you had the robust debates on the different budgets and needs. So thank you for that.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Other further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll for 24-041.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. 24-041 passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-042. Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-042, second reading. An ordinance finding, determining and declaring the necessity of acquiring general utility easements and temporary construction easements for the Rockwood Storm Drainage Improvement Project, project number 132202, authorizing the negotiation and eminent domain proceedings if necessary, authorizing the use of experts as needed, authorizing and directing the execution of documents and the payment of funds to property owners or others holding property rights in conjunction with the project. Second reading.
Any further discussion on 24-042? Seeing none, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And 24-042 passes. Seven in favor, zero opposed. That brings us to 24-043.
24-043, second reading. An ordinance amending Article III of Chapter Five of the City Code by enacting new sections to revise and clarify the requirements for extended stay hotels. Second reading.
Any discussion on 24-043?
Mr. Mayor?
Please proceed.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion to postpone this until July 1st just so I can have a little bit further review of the changes that are taking place and talk to staff with just a little bit, little bit more, a little bit deeper on some of these things and the impact that this will have with our tourism and just general health of our hotels and motels.
Okay. Very good. Is there a, so that is a formal motion?
Correct.
Do I have a second?
Second.
We've got a motion in a second to postpone item 24-043. Any further discussion on the postponement of this item? Seeing no further discussion, Madam City Clerk, please call the roll on 24-043 to postpone this item to the July 1st agenda.
Councilmember Fears?
Yes.
Councilmember Perkins?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember McCandless?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiley?
Yes.
Councilmember Vought?
Yes.
Mayor Rowland?
Yes. And item 24-043 is postponed until the July 1st meeting. That will bring us to first readings. And Madam City Clerk, please proceed.
24-044, first reading. An ordinance approving a rezoning from District C-2, General Commercial, to District R-30/PUD, high-density residential slash planned unit development and approving a preliminary development plan for the property located at 304 South Liberty Street. First reading. 24-045, first reading. An ordinance vacating all that part of Blue Ridge Terrace and existing unimproved 40-foot right-of-way located within the bounds of Blue Ridge Orchard, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. 24-046, first reading. An ordinance vacating an existing unimproved right-of-way of all that part of South Main Street as dedicated in Martha's Vineyard, a subdivision in Independence, Jackson County, Missouri, also vacating an existing utility easement of all that part of a vacated alley in Martha's Vineyard, a subdivision in Jackson County, I'm sorry, Jackson County, Missouri. First reading. 24-047, first reading. An ordinance adopting amendments to the fiscal year 2023-2024 budget, which was approved by ordinance number 19453. First reading. 24-048, first reading. An ordinance amending Article 22 of Chapter One of the City Code by deleting Section 1.22.004 and enacting in lieu thereof a new section 1.22.004, changing the required age of the municipal judge. First reading.
And that brings us to Councilmember Comments. And Councilmember Stewart, would you like to proceed?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Okay. I just didn't hear you, sorry. Councilmember Fears?
Sure. Councilor Mayor, thank you. I want to just, I've lost my calendar here tonight. For some reason, my city calendar is not coming up. But there were a few things that I recall that I just wanted to mention. One is that we were able to attend the Susquehanna Homeowners Association meeting on Sunday evening, Saturday evening. And I just want to give a mention out to folks that if you would like for any of the council members to come out to that type of a meeting to talk about the upcoming items for, that will be voting on in August, would be happy to do that and visit about those things. I'm going to let Councilmember McCandless talk about the activities last Saturday and morning. And there's something else that I can't. Oh, I'll, I think I'll let Councilmember McCandless just talk about the other things. That's all I have. It was, it's been a busy but productive time. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Wiley?
Thank you. I'm going to pass tonight. There's a little lag on the Zoom. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Vought?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
Okay. Councilwoman McCandless?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to talk just a little, excuse me, a little bit about a neighborhood that was in Independence called the Neck Neighborhood. This was a neighborhood that was in McCoy Park across the street from the Truman Library. This was a vibrant black neighborhood that was established in 1877. But with urban renewal in the 1960s, that area was declared blighted and the entire neighborhood was removed. And with that, about 80 families were displaced, many of them out of Independence because they weren't able to find housing in Independence. Either no one would rent to them or no one would sell to them. And we have had some small markers of that event over in McCoy Park. But we recently put in two memorial markers, one that shows the names of the families who were displaced and the other it shows a map of the streets that were removed. It was a tremendous opportunity for conversation and history sharing and really both celebrating the resiliency of that neighborhood but also giving those families a moment to be acknowledged in the difficult times that followed that displacement. I really have special appreciation for city staff who made that possible. I'm going to call out Amy Jones, who helped with the research, Sam Morris, who is a logistics wonder, Parks and Rec with Morris Heidi and Charlotte, who helped us get them placed, got trees planted, Rebecca Gannon, who came out and videotaped. Just really a tremendous opportunity for the city to do well. It doesn't make up for that, but at least it gives us a chance to examine our history and do a little bit of reconciliation. So thank you. My second item is to thank Cindy McLean for her eight years on the Planning Commission. Planning Commission is, takes a lot of work as Councilmember Heather Wiley knows, in a really important spot in the city. So I just want to send my appreciation to her for her dedication. Now, my last is, of course, a shout-out to Chief Dustman's mother because we all know, no one makes it to Eagle Scout without their mother dragging them through the process. Of course, the dad helps too, but there's a reason that the mom gets a rose at the end of that process. So I'm just saying. Thank you.
Well said. And I also want to second your thoughts with regards to Cindy McLean working on the, she worked so hard and so well on that and she ran the committee, the Planning Commission so, so well. So I second your process there. One of the things that I was involved with this week at the Truman Home was a naturalization process, basically bringing young children. They were all children who basically became citizens of the United States here last week. And it was just a great event. They always do a great event there and it was just incredibly inspiring to see these young people become citizens of the United States and what an incredible privilege that is. And I actually, I want to, please, 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 please. I'm on my knees apologizing. Councilmember, I did not let you go next after Councilwoman McCandless. So please forgive me for that error in judgment. The floor is yours and you now have the entire night. So fire away. away.
Thanks, well, fortunately, there's no Monday Night Football, so we're okay there. We got a full 45 minutes of discussion.
Very good.
Just two, two real quick things. One, a longtime sign is finally in the process and will be, we keep our fingers crossed, put up. The old Glenwood sign that was given to the folks in Inglewood, gosh, years ago, not given, but purchased, long story there, they are now getting it to the place to wear and refabricated, the old Glenwood sign will say Inglewood, and it's going to be put in the ground, we got the puddings in, we put this Friday. So once that is in, it'll be lit up, and it's going to be a huge sign that gives you a sense of arrival and a sense of place, and that is what takes place when the community works together. The CID is the one that really helped the funding to get that together, and the big vision of the neighborhood, the area of Inglewood, driving this together. Great, big, beautiful sign. Second, this is a shout-out to the PD. Got a voicemail three days ago saying that a longtime investigation of a zero-turn lawnmower was finally found through the hard detective work of the citizen and the IPD, so we've got those united, so good positive stuff, that hard work on PD's side, hard work on the citizen's side, finally get you a resolution on those zero-turn riders, so big positive for that, and that's all that.
Thank you very much, and again, my apologies for the error in
No worries.
...in process. Mr. City Manager, the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir, just a couple of quick items for the council. Would like to remind and invite members of the community to come out this Wednesday for the Juneteenth celebration, that's at the Uptown Market from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Going to be lots of good speakers, music, food, just a great community event, so looking for a way to celebrate the holiday, please come out and join in a great day of community building. I would like to give a quick shout-out to our fire department. As I've reported before, we've experienced some vacancies in that department that has certainly impacted budget over the last year. Our interim chief, Chief Los, working with his staff, formed an internal committee of 12 fire personnel, folks that volunteered their own time and energy to go out to different community events across the metropolitan area far and wide and do recruitment activities. As a result of their efforts, they have now identified 10 individuals who are going through our hiring process, an additional three personnel who we are just awaiting their certifications, and assuming we get all those folks through the process, that will leave us with just five total vacancies in our fire department. Helps us not only with budget, but provide better community response to those that we serve as, as well. Last thing that I would like to mention is maybe just a little bit of a personal appeal. I've had a couple incidents lately that are just, from a city manager's perspective, are a little bit disturbing. One of our park employees today, out in the community working, came across some people that were operating dirt bikes, where dirt bikes are not allowed to be. When he pointed this out to them, they chose to respond by headbutting him and then proceeding to run over him twice with their motorized vehicles. Had to go to urgent care, being treated, receiving stitches. Our thoughts are certainly with him. This follows a recent event where one of our utility shut-off employees doing their job was shot at by somebody in the community, so just want to remind everybody that our city employees are in fact human beings who are trying to get home to their families at night as well. They're just doing a job, serving the public, may not always like what the rules are, but they're just trying to do their jobs and enforcing them, so certainly would ask and implore people to show them the respect you would show any human being out on the street. Mayor, that's all I have tonight.
I am glad you mentioned those instances, and it is so important for us as a city to make sure that we respect law and order. As you said, these are employees trying to do their job, we want to make sure that we have respect for them. We can certainly disagree, but we can certainly do it in a polite and respectful way, and when people go out of bounds, and you had another incident today that you did not mention, which could have in fact been worth mentioning, but we'll address that issue too.
Yes, sir.
And, but anyway, I just, I appreciate you bringing that up. Chief, I appreciate your help with all of this and making sure that people abide by the laws. So with that, if there's anything else?
No, sir, thank you.
We'll call this meeting adjourned. Thank you.